Good evening and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of August 27, 2025. At this time, I call upon everyone so that we can stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you all remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers, past and present. Thank you. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded by Dartmouth Community Media and that the next regular scheduled meeting for the Board of Appeals is Wednesday, September 10th of 2025. So, we have an unusually large crowd here tonight, and obviously, we're dealing with an unusual type of petition. Not that we've not handled it before, we have, but this is one that certainly has a lot more significance to our community, and it's always nice to see people come forward who are concerned about anything that's going to happen, specifically this type of development. So, I just want to set out, and I just want to read something to the members in the audience and to the viewers at home, what we are confronted with here. There, in essence, there are two petitions that are here tonight, and in Massachusetts, Chapter 40B is a state law that allows developers to receive waivers from local zoning regulations to build affordable housing developments. The primary purpose of 40B is to increase the supply of affordable housing by bypassing restrictive local zoning ordinances. Each city and town in Massachusetts has a subsidized housing inventory, which is the percentage of their housing stock that is affordable. Towns that have 10% or more of their housing stock dedicated to affordable housing are exempt from 40B requirements. However, if a municipality doesn't have enough affordable housing, it may not be able to reject a 40B project. Developers apply for a comprehensive permit, which gives them approval from multiple local boards in a single streamlined process. The law aims to create regional housing fairness by allowing communities to plan for and meet their fair share of housing needs. The two hearings before us tonight are for comprehensive permits and applications filed under 40B. The process and the role of our board is very different than it is for special permits and variances, and that's what we normally conduct here, is special permits and variances. This is an entirely different process. The board's primary task, or the board, I should say, the board stands in the shoes of all local boards, which includes all permitting boards. The applicant is not required to obtain any other local permits or approvals from any other local board or department, and the board cannot require this. The zoning board can also cannot condition the permit on the applicant coming back to the board for other permits. The board's primary task is to apply the consistent with local needs. That seems to be the standard that we are required to impose on this throughout this process as a matter of law, and it's the standard of review under 40B. This consists of weighing local concerns against the regional need of affordable housing. The board may deny a project, refuse to waive local bylaws, or impose conditions upon a project only where it finds that there is a valid local concern that outweighs the housing need. Local concerns must be caused by the project. They cannot be based on a pre-existing condition. In addition, concerns like municipal fiscal impacts, school enrollment cannot be considered. Housing need: If the town has not achieved 10% affordable housing units on the state's subsidized housing inventory, there is a rebuttable presumption that there is a regional need for affordable housing that outweighs all local concerns. Dartmouth currently is at 7.81%. The board has the authority to waive any local bylaws and regulations that are necessary for the construction of the project. As noted, the board is required to grant these waivers unless there is a local concern that outweighs the housing need. The board is not obligated to grant waivers that are not necessary for the construction of the project. For example, developers often request waivers of local fees, noise ordinances, et cetera. These requests are generally denied. For local pre-construction permits that are not granted until much later in the permitting process, such as local stormwater permits, sewer connection permits, street opening permits, et cetera, the 40B regulations set forth a procedure for how those permits are issued. It's essentially a ministerial process where the applicant files the final construction plans and a copy of the comprehensive permit, and the department is required to issue the permit. Therefore, it is important to solicit and receive feedback from other boards and town departments, especially those such as DPW and Engineering. The board has the right to have the project peer reviewed at the developer's expense. The peer reviewers are only permitted to review the project and materials filed by the developer. They cannot undertake their own studies. Peer review of the project's pro forma is available only in a specific situation. The board has to propose conditions, give the developer reasonable time to review the conditions, and the developer notifies the board that the conditions would render the project uneconomic. So, we're going to set out a few ground rules as to how we're going to conduct tonight's hearing. We were unsure as to how many people were going to appear here, and I understand that there are people in the other rooms? There are. So, we may have to consider, depending on how this works this evening, and I think we may move to another location. So, I'm going to give the petitioners about 30 to 40 minutes, probably a maximum 40 minutes each, to basically state their case here this evening. I ask that everyone, if you could kindly just mute your cellphones. I know that we forget. So, I'm going to give the petitioners, there are two cases on for this evening, we're going to give them an opportunity, basically, to provide their opening statement, just like in a courthouse, that they're going to tell us what they're trying to do here. I am not going to allow any public comment this evening, and the reasoning for that is we need to still digest some of what's coming before us. But I want everyone in the audience to be assured that I will hear from each and every one of you on this. I want to hear from our members of the community. We've always, as a board, have always allowed anyone to speak either in support or in opposition to any petitions that are brought before us, and this one is going to be no different. And obviously, this one certainly has far-reaching impacts. This is, we're mindful of what this can do to a community. However, we're also, I want you, the audience, to understand that our hands are somewhat tied here, given their state regulation. There's a specific state regulation that allows them to streamline this process. We all serve here as volunteer members. We're just volunteer. Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask that you remove the phone from this room, please.
I'm trying to shut it off.
You have been for the last minute.
I don't want her to think she can't come back in. So, someone kind of let her know that she can come back. Could you let her know that she can come back in, but just make, ensure that the phone is off?
She's not dead.
Okay. Understanding.
I want to hear the phone call.
So, and I'm sure people want to be heard, and I will provide everyone an opportunity to be heard. More than likely, that'll start at the next meeting. I don't know exactly what date that will be. We're going to be setting those dates, and we're going to be setting them separate from each other. So, we're not going to have both cases on for each night. There'll be one case on one given night and possibly another case on another given night. I think that's the direction we're going with this. But I will speak to Michelle to ensure that the powers that be within the town have the ability to coordinate this. We're also discussing possibly having this either at the middle school, which is right next door, or at the high school auditorium. I don't like the fact that this is sort of broken up and it's segmented with people just viewing it in television. I think that they have the right, if they want to be here in person, they should be able to be heard in person and have the opportunity to hear it in person as well. So, I've said a lot, and I think at this point in time, I'm going to move on to the next portion of tonight's meeting, which is starting the public hearings. Unless there's anything else our members would like to add, is there anything else as far as housekeeping you think we need to address? Don't hold back, Attorney Eamon.
I don't think so.
All right. So, moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first matter we have is comprehensive permit, ZCMP-25-2. The petitioner applicant is Robert Lincoln, and the owner of the property is Sherbrook Farms LLC. The subject property is located at 498 Old Westport Road, MAP 48, Lot 29. It's located within the Single Residence B District, and the case was, and this matter was legally advertised, on August 7th and August 14th of this year.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abudders list.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The petitioner in this case is seeking a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass General Law 40B and the Comprehensive Permit Guideline 760 CMR 56.00 from the Massachusetts General Laws and Dartmouth Zoning Bylaw Regulations. The petitioner slash applicant is proposing a development on approximately 81.8 acres to be known as Sherbrook Farms, to be located at 498 Old Westport Road. The development will have a total of 156 units of rental housing, including 39 affordable units. The petitioner applicant is requesting waivers from the following zoning bylaws: Chapter 375, Section 375-8.2, Chapter 375, Section 375-8.4A2, Chapter 375, Section 375-24.3C, Chapter 375-24.3I, Chapter 375-24.3-I, 7, and 375-24.3I8, and 375-24.3J, and 375-24.4B. Now, we've got some issues with conflicts, right, potentially? Want to recuse, does Dr. Agai? Is this the case, Dr. Agai?
Yes.
Not yet, Dr. Agai.
I recuse myself.
I think you wanted to do both, no? Okay, fair enough, so not on this one.
Thanks.
Okay, so where do we have those?
11th, 16th May.
Okay. So, I'm being told by our town secretary here, for our board secretary, that there are several other waivers that they're seeking. How many more?
I think eight.
She believes that there are eight more. They were submitted after this was published. I haven't reviewed those as of yet. So, this is, this is basically, you know, it's an ongoing process. None of this is going to happen in a night or two. This is going to continue on, there are going to be several meetings in which there's going to be a lot of discussion about different aspects about this project and how it potentially impacts neighbors, how it impacts traffic, how it impacts stormwater, how it impacts water supplies, sewer, all of those things. But having said that, I would like to make one further announcement. We also, well, actually, a few more. We also have attorney Susan Murphy, who's here. She was appointed to us to represent us and assist us in this process, as this is a process that we are not completely familiar with. It's one that we understand, it's one that we've dealt with before, but it's a very intricate process, and legal counsel is most certainly required, and we're fortunate to have her here, and she's sitting to the furthest right seat from the podium here. Now, there's one other issue. There's a requirement, whenever there's an appearance of a potential conflict on a case, that we have to file certain paperwork and it has to be disclosed. So, I've been told that because there is a potential for an appearance of a conflict on my part, I recently learned, just yesterday afternoon, that the petitioner, or one of the petitioners in this case, was a former client of mine that I represented individually. Whoever's coming before us is a company of some type, but this gentleman has some interest in this company. I don't know the extent of it, but he is an individual that I represented more than three years ago. But I didn't have any involvement in the closing or the acquisition, the actual acquisition of this property by this particular individual, and I have no involvement in their petition that come before us here today. I'll be filing all the necessary disclosures in accordance with the state ethics rules, and I will await any type of determination that may come from them. Whatever they tell me I need to do is what I will do. And at this time, I do not find that I am unable to render an unbiased or an impartial decision on this petition. So, as a result, I feel comfortable moving forward. I also understand, but Dr. Agai's for the next one. Do you have something else that you wanted to show me?
This is covered by Dartmouth.
Yeah, I said that in the beginning. Yeah. Did I not announce that it was Dartmouth Community video that this? I did. So, I've got our town administrator acknowledging. That's okay. It's all right, but I thank you. Listen, that doesn't mean, I want you to interject whenever, because I do forget things, and as I'm getting older, it's getting worse. All right. So, having said all that, at this point in time, I'll call upon the petitioner or their representative to state their case.
I also hear some further chiming in of telephones.
I'd kindly ask at this point in time if anyone who has a phone that they kindly either shut the phone off, or if you could just mute the phone so that we're not interrupted. And thank you very much. Thank you for taking care of that.
My phone is left there.
Good solution.
The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Appeal and members of the public tonight. My name is Tanya Treveson. I'm with the firm of Mirione Shaughnessy &amp; Udi, and I'm...
I'm sorry, I'm just going to ask you, if you could just speak a little louder, please?
Oh, sure.
Please.
Absolutely. My name is Tanya Treveson. I'm with the law firm of Mirione Shaughnessy &amp; Udi, and I represent Sherbrook Farms LLC and its manager, Rick Lincoln, who is also with me tonight. So, Mr. Chair, you gave a great summation of the 40B process and a lot of what this project involves. I do apologize to the public. We just handed in some copies of renderings of the project that we do not have for the screen for everybody to see, but for future presentations, we will definitely make sure those are available for everybody to see.
If you don't mind, I would like to just have the board, if we could have a couple of those, and we could put a couple for the audience if they want to just pass it along. I have no problem with that, just so they could see what these look like.
Absolutely.
Oh, is it the entire packet? I thought it was just the colored photos. Those rent, oh, it's the entire packet?
Yeah, I have packets.
Oh, it's one packet or it's, how many packets?
This with the record and stuff.
What is it?
I have colored photos of field, that's it.
All right, so we can pass those along, so they can see roughly what this project looks like.
I want to keep one for the record.
Oh, I want, oh, absolutely. I didn't say all of them, just, let's put two or three, and that's it. They can pass those along. If you'd be kind enough just to pass another one?
Oh, oh, okay. Thank you.
There you go.
Mr. Chair, Rick Lincoln, I do have large format stuff I can throw on easel if people want to look at it from the side.
That would be nice also, so we can look at it. Do you have it? Sure.
Where's the best place to put the easel, then?
I think the camera is that way, so probably to your right.
Over here, okay.
Yes, to your right would probably be good.
Is there an issue with those waivers were not published?
And if the media gentleman out back feels that there's a better place to put that, I defer to him, but you could put it there. Who's, what's it, who? Michael.
Okay, great. Okay, perfect. So, this is an aerial view with the rendering sketched in of the proposed buildings on the site. So, I'm just going to start from the beginning here. So, the site is at 498 Old Westport Road, which is in the Single Residence B zoning district. The site encompasses approximately 90 acres on three parcels of land. It's mostly undeveloped, and there are also ponds and wetlands. There are existing paths as well due to the prior sand and gravel excavation business that was on site. The actual area to be developed is 11 acres of the 90. That includes forested and open land. There will be no impact on any wetland resource area. There are no residential abutters to the right, left, or rear of the property. There's a nursery across the street, I understand. And the project is proposed as for four three-story wood-framed buildings. They would be colonial style, 47 feet in height. These would be apartment buildings. Each of the buildings would contain 39 units for a total of 156 units. 39 of those units would be designated as affordable housing, and there would be eight handicapped accessible units. There's also a proposed clubhouse, which is in the front, more the entrance and around the green space. I can provide the numbers, the breakdowns of the types of apartments. There would be 44 one bedrooms, 93 two bedrooms, 15 three bedrooms.
Go a little slower.
Oh, sorry.
How many, how many two bedrooms?
92.
93.
Yeah.
15 three bedrooms. And that would be 275 bedrooms total. The water and sewer is estimated to be approximately 16,600 gallons per day. The proposed parking is 267 spots. Now, the zoning code requires 281 spaces and seven handicap spaces, so we're looking for a waiver from that provision. The parking ratio would be 1.8 per unit for a total of 267 spaces, seven of which would be handicap. We also note that we can reduce the spaces to nine feet by 18 feet, as well as some compact car parking to increase that ratio. Consultation with the fire department, I believe, has revealed that the fire turning radius, no, I'm sorry, the fire turning radius has been analyzed and provided for. We also have completed a traffic study, which has indicated there would be 70 new trips during the weekday morning peak hours, 86 new trips during the weekday evening peak hours. As far as stormwater, there would be three subsurface drainage areas and two open pond drainage basins. The buffers to the east side of the property would be an 80-foot rear to 10-foot at the road with an existing tree canopy. The west side has over a 600-foot buffer. The north side has over 1,000 feet, and the south-facing street side has 10 to 15 buffer of existing tree canopy. For the wetlands, there are two parking areas proposed within the 50-foot to 100-foot buffer. That's approximately 3,000 square feet. So, the plan is to seek an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission after approvals for the comprehensive permit. We are not in a floodplain, so no worries about that. There is a photometric plan in process. So, we've proposed lighting, exterior lighting around the property, 20-foot post lamps that would be shielded so that light wouldn't spill out onto any abutting properties. Mass DEP issued their project eligibility letter, I'm sorry, Mass Housing issued the project eligibility letter on June 6, 2025. That should be in the file. As the chairman stated, the subsidized housing inventory for the town is currently at 7.8%. The town currently has 980 SHI units, so they're 275 units short of the statutory minimum of 10%. I'd also like the board to know that there are certain items in process currently for the development. There's contaminated soil in one hotspot from a former diesel tank, which is going to be dug up and disposed of, which is around this area here to the west side. There's also proposed demolition of two metal buildings on the site in preparation for subsurface due diligence. There are several test pits for final civil engineering and stormwater plans, and geoprobe drilling for geotechnical engineering, and, as I said before, conservation filings from the wetlands consultant. If the chairman would like, I can go through the list of waivers.
Actually, before you do that, I'd like to read into the record a letter that was prepared by our assistant town administrator concerning some of the things that we still need as part of this application, and maybe you can address some of them if they've already been addressed since then.
Okay.
I probably should have read this earlier, but this was a letter that was dated August 8th of this year, and it was sent to the attention of Rick Lincoln, who's the member of Conoco, and it says, "Dear Mr. Lincoln, the Dartmouth Zoning Board of Appeals is in receipt of your comprehensive permit submission of July 28, 2025. The submission was reviewed for compliance with the MGL 40B and with 760 CMR 56, and the zoning board's rules and regulations for comprehensive permits pursuant to MGL 40B, Section 20-23. The purpose of this letter is to notify you that after preliminary review, your submission lacks the following items required to constitute a complete application. One, a site development plan, which includes proposing landscaping improvements and open areas that are labeled per 760 CMR Section 56.052A. And so, part two, a list of all specific waivers based on the plan submitted per 760 CMR Section 56.052H, in addition, per the Chapter 40B handbook for Zoning Board of Appeals, that was published by the Massachusetts Housing Partnership in cooperation with the Department of Housing and Community Development. Mass Housing and Mass Development. It is the developer's responsibility to identify the waivers needed in order to build a project. As a rule, the ZBA should not grant what is commonly known as a plan waiver or a blanket waiver to accommodate conditions that may be apparent on the developer's plan but not specifically identified in a list of waivers requested by the developer. In addition, your submission lacks the following supplemental information required by the zoning board per the local rules and regulations for comprehensive permits. The existing conditions plan is not on the correct scale with a symbol key. The plan does not include existing buildings with dimensions or existing topography, two-foot contours. Though it is noted that this information appears in the site plan documents, please verify contours with labels. The site development plan is not on the correct scale with a symbol key. The property lines and names of direct abudders are also not shown. The architectural drawings are not in the requested scale of a quarter inch equals one foot, and the report on existing conditions does not include information on applicable features of historic or archaeological significance. The report on existing conditions does not include information on the housing program, project impacts, excluding traffic impact and construction impact. All submissions required for a complete application, subject to review submissions as may be requested by the zoning board during the hearing process, must be received not later than one week prior to the opening of the public hearing for the requested comprehensive permit. The Board of Appeals reserves all of its rights pursuant to 40B." So, it just goes on just what we can reserve, and it's signed by Chris Vitale. So, I'm sure that since the preparation of this letter, there are other things that you probably have, is it in that packet that you've submitted to us today?
Yes.
All right. Without going through it, just based on your representation, does it address all of the concerns in this letter, to the best of your knowledge?
I believe Mr. Lincoln can respond to that.
All right, well, we'll defer to him when we get to that.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, it was also identified after this letter went out, and I do believe counsel mentioned it, that the board has not received a stormwater report, which is also required in connection with the application, but I believe she referenced that that was in process, and it would just be helpful to understand the timing.
So, there's just some, so there's very limited mention on the plan that we have about some hole, some basically drain holes and whatever else, but we need a much more detailed plan about how the water would, you know, be accommodated, the storm, call it what, stormwater management in your world, right? Fair enough. All right, so, carry on.
Okay. So, if it please the chair, I can go through the list of waivers. I don't believe they were... I don't believe they were included in the...
Actually, just one second. We'll defer to counsel here for a second. Yes, Attorney Murphy?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chair, I defer to the board on how much detail you want to get into. There was a list, there is an additional list that I believe that they're going to review. It includes other local bylaws, including zoning. However, the list, the most recent list that was provided still includes plan and blanket waivers. So, I would recommend that the applicant go back and redo their waiver list, and the board take it up at a future meeting.
All right, so, that's fine. So, if you could revise that. I think if there's any further explanation you need from her, if she's here, but I think that that was pretty straightforward. And the next time, if you could provide us with a specific list of it, that would be great. That way, we could look at them and provide checklists. It'd be easier for us.
Absolutely.
That make sense, gentlemen?
Yeah, I think so, because we'll probably hold off on the peer review until we get the stormwater and the waiver list. So, we don't want to waste your money or waste the time, too.
Okay.
Right?
So, let me just... Some of these are renderings of the proposed project. So, the public can see. I'll just flip through them briefly.
You just give it a little moment. I think for the viewers at home, so you can focus in, give them an opportunity to focus in, so they can see. Just a few, maybe fifteen, twenty seconds. Excuse me, me? Oh, her. Yeah, and, well, she can't turn it and be on the microphone. If you could just speak a little louder so that they can hear it.
Sure.
All right.
So, this is a rendering of what the proposed project will look like when completed. This is looking toward the northeast from the street view.
And you said there's five buildings?
Four.
Four buildings.
Well, there's four residential buildings, and then the clubhouse, the amenity house, which will be in the front, in the green space area. I'm going to do this. This is easier, okay. All right, so, this diagram shows the exterior finishes of the clubhouse. You can see it's a fiberglass asphalt roof shingle, vinyl clapboard, windows and patio doors. This again is the clubhouse rendering. This is the interior of the clubhouse to show the floor plan. You have a gathering area here, lease house manager's office, storage, mechanicals, fitness area. And this rendering shows another part of the floor plan for the clubhouse. Includes bike storage and a pavilion. And this again is just a rendering of the overall exterior of the project. So, that pretty much concludes the presentation for today, unless the board has any questions.
I will open it up just for board members if they have any questions, just so that we can have some information to rely on as we sort of ponder this as individuals moving forward. So, any future questions we may have. So, I have a couple of questions, but I'm going to defer right now to either Attorney Yeoman or Mr. Shuba, if they have any questions for you.
I have a quick question, Attorney Treavinson. The four buildings, the main buildings, you said it's a three-story building, correct? And one of the waivers is the height, correct? What's the overall height on the main building?
So...
And we allow, what, thirty-six in the...
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five? I'm just...
I think it was forty-seven you said earlier, but I'll let you verify.
Forty-seven, forty-seven feet to the ridge.
To the ridge, okay. Forty-seven, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And is, but I don't know if she answered, that is one of the waivers?
Yeah, I believe so.
It would have to be, if it's not.
It is. That's why I asked.
Any other questions, Mr. Shuba?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Attorney Yeoman?
I have no questions at this time.
All right. I'm just wondering, just to get a sense. Do you know what the square footage is on the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units? If you don't have that tonight, that's fine. I don't need it. It's just, I'd like to get a sense of the size of these units. And if you don't have it, that's fine. I can get it, you can provide it to us.
Okay. I'll make a note of that, yeah.
Right. So, is there anything that you wanted to add, Mr. Lincoln? Or...
I will say one thing on the height.
Okay, I just need you to stand, you can stand up at that podium.
So, Rick Lincoln, the height's forty-seven feet now, but I actually called my architect this morning, because what we're doing on a lot of the buildings now is dropping and building parapets on the side, like four feet, making a flat roof, solar panels and all that. So, we might lose maybe ten feet, so...
So, closer to thirty-seven?
Closer to thirty-seven, yeah. And we've dropped the site a couple of feet, the way we did the grading out there, because we tried to balance the fill on the site. There's a big hole on one side, so when you come in from the street, the whole site's dropping two or three feet, just to reduce the, try and reduce the elevation a little bit.
All right. Obviously, that has impacts of stormwater and whatever else, which I'm sure you guys will take into consideration.
Yes, sir.
All right. Oh, counsel?
Yeah, just a couple of other just administrative things.
Sure.
First, just to give the board the update. The town administrator's office has been seeking the peer review bids, and they're waiting for a couple more to come in. So, when those come in for civil traffic, stormwater, water sewer, et cetera, the whole litany, then those will be, those will be provided.
By the next meeting, and that's something we got to do with them, is sort of pick a date as to when the next meeting would be. And then, hopefully by then, we'll have, you know, at least some names that this board can decide we want to pick, and also quotes as to what it's going to cost.
Right. So, we already discussed the waivers and the missing application materials. I just want to see, was there anything else? Oh, I think there was a question, and maybe Ms. Beer can answer it. There was a question about whether or not the certified abutters list was complete.
That's correct.
Did that get resolved, Ms. Beer? Have they, and they have submitted and updated?
Yep.
And those postcards have gone out?
Because there's more than one parcel there, and they only went off the abutters list of one of the parcels?
Right.
Okay.
Right. Okay. So, those are just some administrative things.
Good. And if there's anything else we need to know, just let us know. All right, so, so what do we got? Are we, gentlemen, are we shooting for Thursdays on 40Bs? Is that what we're doing? Thursdays? All right, so, excuse me? At the middle school? Okay. So, I'm going to announce that to everyone, all right? So, at this point in time, we're looking to continue this matter to Thursday, September 18th, and that would be at six o'clock. Oh, that a date you can't do?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm going to be out of town that week.
That was the only date you couldn't do.
Yeah, that's the only date I couldn't do, was the 18th.
She said. All right.
Yeah, but it was impossible.
I know, I know, I know, but, well, we need her there. So, we'll put it on for the 2nd of October.
Unless we switch these two and put it on the 25th.
We need her there, too.
We need her in both.
We need her in both. Excuse me? We're going to have to make it available, I hope, right?
I mean, Mr. Chair, I know it's not preferable, but for one more hearing, would you consider doing them back-to-back? Because the next meeting's still going to be, you know, engaging peer review. There won't be a substantial amount of testimony necessarily at that. But I don't, I defer to the board how much you want to do in one night.
Well, I do want to give them an opportunity, but it's just tough to put them both on the same night. Let me ask you this. What about the 25th and the 2nd of October? Twenty-fifth of September and the 2nd of October, and I'm asking members of the board. Are you available?
Second of October.
You're not here 2nd of October.
2nd of October is Yom Kippur.
Right. And you're not, you're late to that.
Okay, forgot about that.
I can do the 25th.
You can do the 25th.
I can do the 25th.
All right, so, let's put it on for the 25th. We entertain it one at a time. That's how we're going to handle this. So, that'll be the 25th. She'll be available on the 25th.
Yes, the week of the 14th is the only week that I'm available.
So, Attorney Farrier, are you available on the 25th?
September?
September.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
People have stopped talking.
All right. So, and I've been told, excuse me? You're available on 25th?
Oh, you are? Alvin, you are, too? Okay. Oh, good.
So, we're good. All right, so, this next meeting, for this case, will be continued to September 25th, and it will be at six o'clock. It will not be at this building. It'll be at the middle school auditorium. Should we check with the town administrator and make sure that's not going to be a problem? You going to be able to make that work for us, Cody?
I already have them scheduled.
Excuse me?
I already have them.
You already have it scheduled? Okay, great. So, again, for our viewers at home and everyone else who's at Town Hall in a different room, it is this case, we're going to have a formal motion, but we're moving at this point to schedule it for the 25th at six o'clock in the evening at the middle school.
Before you take that vote, I guess it's just a question for the applicant of when those supplemental materials will be available? Will those be submitted prior to the next hearing?
Well, I was hoping, and if it's not, then we could already put it on for a later date, if you don't think that's enough time. Today's what, the 27th? If you could, yes? It's almost a month.
So, I updated everything with the exception of landscape architectural plans, which are in process.
What about the stormwater report?
Well, the stormwater report, yeah, we're waiting. The long, the short story is I'm waiting on a demo permit, because I need to take the building down today. You know, we were trying to do environmental and subsurface for the stormwater at the same time, so...
Do you think you have a stormwater report?
Probably not.
So, maybe we should push you over to October?
Yeah, which may even give us a chance if we have peer review set up. I don't know if you can...
We'll probably definitely have names by then and quotes that we can select.
So, Mr. Chair, if you're going to push them to the October, what you may be able to do, if you want to sign off on the peer reviewers, maybe you could put this one and Hawthorne on the same night. But all you do for this one is talk about engaging the peer reviewers, if you want to wait and do that as a board.
But if we don't have a stormwater report by the 25th, what good is that?
Yeah, but I think you want to engage them, right?
I see. But if they don't have anything to review, all they do is be engaged.
No, no, but we need to engage.
Well, I guess there's some turnaround time to get that going, right? All right, so, it's the 25th, and they'll do the best they can and use their due diligence to get whatever they need to us.
Yeah, and then...
That's the middle school?
Is that the middle school? So, excuse me?
Six P M.
Six P M. All right, I'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion. Here we continue comprehensive permit Z C M P 25-2 to September 25th at 6:00 P M at the middle school.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. All right, we'll see you folks back then.
Thank you.
So, well, some people want to see it both. So, if there's anyone in the audience here in this room who's not here for the matter that we just heard, there are people for the next matter that are actually in another room that I know that they would like to come in here. So, if it's not your primary concern, being the one that we just heard, or the, I should say, the next one that we're going to hear, then I asked that if you would provide some room and space. Obviously, it's this evening, we kind of had to gauge what was going to happen here, and we're going to be in a much better position to accommodate everyone on the next hearing. But if there's anyone, so, we want to give anyone an opportunity to come from these other rooms here. There's some available seats. Yeah, we could do that. So, we'll take a quick, just a five-minute break. We're off the record.
Connect your knucker. There you go.
Fight, don't fight, please. Watch.
I asked for it. All right, we're back on the record, we're back in session. Moving on to the second matter that's on for tonight's public hearings portion of the meeting. It is comprehensive permit Z-C-M-P-25-1. The petitioner applicant is Paul Cusson. The owner of the property is Bliss Investors LLC. The property address is 970 Tucker Road, also known as map 46 lot 2. It's located within the single residence B district, and it was legally advertised on August 7th and August 14th of this year.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the abutters list.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. The petitioner in this case is seeking a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20-30, and the comprehensive permit guideline 760 CMR 56.0 from the Massachusetts General Laws and Dartmouth zoning bylaw regulations. The petitioner applicant's proposing a development on approximately 56.3 acres to be known as residences at Hawthorne, to be located at 970 Tucker Road. The development will have a total of 147 units. 117 of these will be single-family homes and 30 duplex units, which are 15 separate buildings. Within the 147-unit development, 37 units will be designated as affordable and sold to households that do not exceed 80% of the AREAR median income. The property is located in the single residence B district. They're seeking waivers. Now, there's numerous waivers here, and I don't want to belabor this, but this list is available. It was provided to every, all of the abutters, was part of the notice, it's also published. If anyone would like to see the list of waivers, they can do so by speaking to the Secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals, who's on the second floor of this building, between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 to get a copy of them if you'd like to. But they are quite voluminous, and I don't want to belabor and bore everyone to death about reading these. So I'm going to, at this point, move on to reading a letter that was prepared by the Assistant Town Administrator. And this letter was dated August 8th of 2025. It was sent to the attention of Mr. Paul Cusson, and it says, "Dear Mr. Cusson, the Dartmouth Zoning Board of Appeals is in receipt of your comprehensive permit submission of July 28, 2025. The submission was reviewed for compliance with Mass. General Law 40B and with Section 760 CMR 56 and the zoning board rules and regulations. The purpose of this letter is to notify you that after preliminary review, your submission lacks the following items required to constitute a complete application. One, a site development plan, which includes general dimensions and proposed landscaping improvements and open areas that are labeled per 760 CMR 56.052A. Two, architectural drawings are not signed by a registered architect, do not include typical elevations, height from grade to the roof ridge, and do not include construction type and exterior finishes pursuant to and in accordance with 760 CMR 5605. A preliminary subdivision plan has also not been prepared. A preliminary utilities plan showing the proposed location and types of sewage, drainage, and water facilities, including hydrants, has not been prepared. A list of all specific waivers requested per 760 CMR 56.052H. In addition, per Chapter 40B handbook that was published by the Mass. Housing Partnership in cooperation with the division, the department, excuse me, of housing and community development. It's clear in that, in that handbook that it is the developer's responsibility to identify the waivers needed in order to build the project. As a rule, the ZBA should not grant what is commonly known as plan waiver or a blanket waiver to accommodate conditions that may be apparent on the developer's plan but not specifically identified in a list of waivers requested by the developer. In addition, your submission lacks the following supplemental information required by the zoning board, per the local rules and regulations for comprehensive permits. The application does not include proof of limited profit status. It also doesn't include, the cover sheet does not include the plan preparer information to project location map. Three, the existing condition plan is not on the correct scale with a symbol key. The plan does not include dimensions of existing streets, parking areas, sidewalks, or driveways. The proposed buildings with dimensions, proposed roadway and parking areas outlined with dimensions, and existing utilities and infrastructure are not shown. So, part four, the site development plan is not on the correct scale with a symbol key. The property lines and names of direct abutters are also not shown. The proposed topography is not shown. Natural features and vegetation to remain are not shown. Subdivision lines with approximate course distances, lot lines, and building setbacks are not shown. Locations and types of infrastructure and utilities, including septic or wastewater treatment systems, if applicable, are not shown. Five, the reports on existing conditions do not include information on the housing program, project impacts, excluding transportation impact evaluation dated 2/7/25, or construction impacts. Also doesn't have a definitive subdivision plan has not been submitted. All submissions required for a complete application must be received not later than one week prior to the opening of the public hearing for the requested comprehensive permit, and it says the board reserves its rights, and it's signed by Chris Vitale. All right, so similar requests, or similar issues, but there seems to be a few more on this one that didn't, that didn't exist on the last petition that came before us. So for the people that may not have heard me earlier, and I don't want to repeat myself on all the issues, but we're not going to have any public comments this evening. We're just basically here to listen to the proposal that these petitioners have. We may have just some preliminary questions at this point. A lot of this is going to be honed out when we hire what's called peer reviewers. Peer reviewers are experts that are hired by us that are to provide information to us, when I say to us, meaning this board and also members of the community will know what that information is and what the issues may be that arise. And then we will be, with that information, be able to hone out ways to minimize the impact of this type of development. So, and I think you've heard the word stormwater here before. There's going to be traffic studies that are done. There's already been a traffic study that's been done, but I, we quite frankly, it's about this thick. I haven't had a chance to review it. It's good bedtime reading, but it's, it's quite complicated, and I do read it, but I defer to the suggestions and the recommendations that are made as, and I say aye, but us as a board, we defer to those suggestions for the most part, so that we can make informed decisions. Now, I think... Is there something you want me to see here, Michelle? Oh, yes. Also, I believe Dr. Agai, you want to recuse yourself from this case, is that correct?
Yes.
So Dr. Agai has made it known prior to the meeting that he wanted to recuse himself. He feels that he has a conflict in this case, so he's recusing himself. He would not be partaking in any of the discussions or in any of the decision-making of this project. Even though he is an alternate member, in the event that we were short any members, he would then serve, but he's recusing himself. In addition to that, I'm asking that we limit any conversations, that'd be very, very few conversations with, amongst the audience, as it can be a distraction. And in addition to that, if everyone could either mute or turn their phones off to ensure that we can further limit the distractions, as we'd like to get through this as quickly as possible. But I want to reiterate, and this is not just me saying, it's every member of this board, and you may never have been before us, tonight may be the first night, we always provide people the opportunity to be heard. This case is not going to be any different from any others. We will allow people to speak in favor of it, and we will allow people to speak in opposition to it. There may be some limitations that will be imposed at that point in time, but I suspect that some of that may open up at the next meeting that we're going to have, that we may open it up to public comment. It all depends. I don't know how much information we're going to really have to have a substantive conversation about the nuts and bolts of what's being put before us. Is there anything else that you gentlemen would like to voice to the members? I give you the floor, if there's anything you guys want to say. But if there isn't, then at this point in time, oh, there's a gentleman.
Jamie Mickelson.
But Mr. Mickelson, I indicated earlier there wouldn't be any public comment.
No, I wanted to recuse myself also.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
I'm a neighbor.
Okay.
And also a select board member. And at this point, I do not represent the select board. I'm here as a resident.
I thank you for disclosing that, and it's duly noted on the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point in time, I'll call upon the petitioner or their representative to state their case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul Cusson of Dulphic Associates. Before I can respond to the letter that you wrote, we also submitted a response to that, which I would like you to read into the letter, into the record. However, prior to doing that, I'd just like to introduce our development team, if I may.
All right, when, did you send that to the board?
Yes, we did, and it was emailed as well.
When was it, when was it sent?
Today.
Today. Oh, so was it this afternoon?
I have.
All right. All right, well, the only thing is, I was in court all afternoon, so obviously I didn't get to...
We did not receive your letter till about five days ago. Even though it was dated August 8th, we had internally a problem with our email server, so we just got it.
All right.
Regardless.
So I'll give you the opportunity to read that into the record if you'd like. It's just, I just want you, I just want you to know that I haven't read it yet. Do you have a copy of it for me?
Sure.
All right, that'd be great.
What I'd like to do, let me introduce our development team, and then I'll give you a couple...
Absolutely, then we can get to that part of it. If you could just give us the overview of this, if you will.
Sure. With me tonight, we have our attorney, Jay Talaman. Jay is an expert in the area of 40B. He's also an expert in the area of municipal law. He's counsel to dozens of municipalities representing towns on the 40B development. He's also a moderator, town moderator in his town of Norfolk. And Jay is also, was a candidate for the Dartmouth Conservation Commission, and unfortunately was not selected. Also, I have Jeff Hathaway here, who is the manager of the, of the LLC that's proposing this development. And we have Christian Fallon, who is our engineer of Fallon Corporation. And we have also his, his assistant, John Marchant, who's also a professional engineer working for Fallon Corporation. So what I'd like to do is just give you this letter, if you could read it into the record.
Thank you. So just, oh, there's a couple questions. Yeah, no, this is, here.
I will read it into the record, but I'd rather hear more about the project first before we get to this, because this has to, you know, this sort of has to do with what's still out there, and I'd rather wait towards the end to do that. All right? I just think it'd flow a lot nicer, okay?
No, no problem. So what, what I'm going to have is Christian come up and discuss the development in detail. He's going to address the issues of the, some of the engineering, stormwater management, all the things that your board is interested in. But I'd just like to point out one thing, is that of the 147 units that we're proposing, 37 of those units would be set aside as affordable units. And those would be made available to applicants that live and work in the town of Dartmouth. Presently, it's almost impossible for my grandchildren and many children in a town that grew up in a town that cannot afford to live in Dartmouth. And it's sad. So of the 37 units that would be designated as affordable, we can set aside 25 of those units for local residents. And the pricing is based on the, you had referred to earlier, the area median income. So the prices, for example, on a, on a three-bedroom, 18, 19, 2,000-square-foot home, two-car garage, some have a one-car garage, would be $250,000. The market rate units, the same identical unit, would be selling for upwards of $750,000 to $850,000.
So if I understand you correctly, I just, you said there are going to be 37 affordable housing units in this, in this development, correct?
That's correct. 25%, which is required under the, under the program.
And of the 37, 25 of those would be for, reserved for low-income individuals that reside in the town of Dartmouth?
Yeah, I would not say low, I would not, even though it's a low and moderate income housing program, I do not consider it low incomes. For example...
Well, let's call it affordable housing then, okay?
Affordable housing. For example, a family of four could still be making $80,000, $85,000 a year and still qualify. So it's not what I would call a low-income program. However, the statute refers to it as a low and moderate income housing program.
And you're saying 25 of the 35 could be designated as that?
25 of the 37.
25 of the 37, yes.
Correct. It's called preference, and there's a particular process that we, together with the town, would have to go through with the subsidizing agency, Mass. Housing, to demonstrate the need for local residents to have preference.
All right.
And that would not be a problem in the case of Dartmouth.
I could pause you just for a moment. Counsel, Attorney Murphy, if I may. So obviously, this would be a condition that, if we were to consider this, it should be a condition that would be imposed. Now...
Yeah, so the way it works, though, is that, and as Mr. Cusson just stated, there is a application process to get local preference, is what it's referred to, through the estate agency, the executive office of housing and livable communities. So it is a process that has to go through, it may be residents of the town, it may be employees of the town, there's a list of individuals that may qualify for local preference. But there is a study required, et cetera, there's a process. But yes, there is a wording of a condition that I could recommend to the board to require that they undertake the local preference request to the state. The state still needs to approve it, and they typically do, but there's, it's not a guaranteed.
Well, that leads to my next question with you. So that all sounds well and good that you put that, we could put that stuff in writing, but what about the enforcement of it, to ensure that it's adhered to? How does that happen?
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Well, if I...
Go ahead.
Well, with any, once the permit is final and they are moving forward with a project, assuming that occurs, if that occurs, then it's, would get enforced the same way the condition to any permit that you have issued would get enforced. They would be in violation of the permit if they did not submit that, submit those documents. And it would, and it would, the requirement would be that they do it prior to, that, that those submissions happen, say, prior to a building permit, et cetera, or prior, so there would be a timeline, a time deadline on which that, under the condition, under which they would have to submit that information, to make sure that it got done timely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add to...
Sure.
Oh, thank you. So actually, what happens, these homes are sold at lottery, it's a housing lottery that is conducted. And prior to that, we have to file an affirmative fair housing marketing plan with the subsidizing agency. Attorney Murphy made reference to E-HLC. In this case, it's actually Mass. Housing, half of those and one of the other, but, so we would have to do a plan, and then we have to get that approved by the state and by Mass. Housing. And in that affirmative fair housing marketing plan is where we include the language of, there are five categories by which you can become a, a local, local preference buyer. You could even work for a, for a company in the town of Dartmouth, and that would qualify. You can work, you could be a policeman, a fireman, a DPW worker, those all qualify. So there's a list of types of preference that's allowed, and all of that has got to be improved, and clearly, it's a condition of the permit, and so we have to, we have to comply with that permit.
Okay.
Okay? So if I may, call on Christian Fallon to tell you a little bit about the development and what we're proposing, and then any questions the board may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Christian Fallon, principal engineer and president of Fallon Corp. Here tonight representing the applicant for this 40B project. I just wanted to go over some of the, some of the goals, project goals that we have as the engineer and, and for the developer, as Paul mentioned, we're trying to construct approximately 140 new residential homes under Chapter 40B. And the goal is to meet Dartmouth's housing needs and affordable housing mandate. We do want to provide community amenities that go along with the project that I'll, I'll go over more into detail, but basically, a community building that has pool, bocce court, pickleball, tennis, and an area where residents can pick up, pick up mail. We feel that the, we created a design that's certainly consistent with the neighborhood, with density and, and style of homes. So this next, next slide here just gives you an idea, aerial, showing our site and integrated within the, within the community. So this is our site here, approximately 56, 56 acres. It abuts to the, to the south. You have Fairway Estates. To the, to the north area, Pascomanset Valley. And you have single-family dwellings along, along Tucker Road and, and close to the Eastley of, along Tucker Road. I will talk a little bit about the density of all the surrounding projects later on in the presentation. So this here is a, is a colored rendering of, of the site plan. Basically, the green, most likely would be, would be grass area. The yellow areas are all the single-family dwellings. The area down to the, to the south here, those were the duplex units. Altogether, we had 15 duplex units and 114 single-family dwellings. The recreation area, and I'll, and I'll give you more of a blow-up of this, but this is the area here when you first drive in off Tucker Road. That's the community building area. There, we have pretty much four roadways, the main roadway, which does loop, loop around. We have another roadway coming off here with a cul-de-sac. Another one here, and another one here. We did meet with the fire department early on, once we had a, a pretty much set layout, and we went over their fire apparatus. We wanted to make sure that they'll be able to turn around the site and access every possible location of, of a unit. And we also, although you don't have the plans yet, the utility plans, we did meet with them in regards to the, the water, fire hydrants, and so forth. So those plans will, will be coming along. As far as the utilities go, I'll talk about them a little bit, although we don't have the plans, but the existing, the proposed electric will all be underground. Therefore, you won't see any wires within the development. It will be connected to public water and sewer. And the stormwater for the development has to meet DEP requirements. Therefore, we will be... Therefore, we will be providing stormwater plans that, that do meet those requirements. In regards to any environmental here, to the, to the west, the site abuts a bordering vegetated wetland. So therefore, any work within 100 feet will have to file with the local conservation commission and the state. We will have to meet, again, stormwater, we'll have to be in full compliance. That's one thing we're certainly not going to be asking any waivers for. So that, we are in process of doing. We actually performed the soil testing last week. That was what was holding up the stormwater plans. With the stormwater, you have the utility plans that go along with it and the profile plans as well. So we just wanted to make sure those were fully completed. The soil testing was done and witnessed by the engineering department, which is actually a requirement in town. So we did go ahead and do that. Also, along with this conservation filing, prior to construction, we will have to file a NIPD's general construction permit. For the environmental. This next plan, I think, is, is very important. This is basically a, a rough phasing plan we have right now. We have, we have shown four different phases. Phase one would be the initial, which would be the community area. And the yellow area here, which is the first roadway. Phase two would be the next roadway. The green area would be phase three. And the blue area would be phase four. This is very important as it ensures controlled growth for the development and, and infrastructure sequencing as well. It also prevents overloading of the town's infrastructure. And also flooding the local real estate market. If we had all these houses on the market at one time, it would certainly, you know, flooded. So we like to phase this out. This is certainly a benefit for the, for the developer as well as it's a financial burden to try to take this whole thing on at once. But I think more importantly, it's more beneficial for the town and the abutting residents as well. And certainly, with phasing this out, it has less impact to the, to the abutting traffic. In regards to the phasing, so with these houses, whether it's phase one, phase three, phase four, every, there will be affordable unit built every four houses. So it's not like the developer can go out and build 100 units and then build the affordable. Every, every, after every third or fourth house will be affordable. And they will be located, you want to know the difference driving around this development when it's said and done. There's no really difference on the, on the outside with the affordable units. This is a, a little blow-up, as I mentioned, of the, the main entrance of the site off of Tucker Road. I think this is, again, very important to have, and, and entranceway is the first impression from visitors, owners, and most importantly, the community will see. So therefore, we wanted to make sure this is going to be well, well-designed and landscaped. So it's, at the end of the day, my name's on this project. I'm also a resident of Dartmouth, live very close, close by here. I drive by this site quite a bit. When I drive by the site 10, 20 years from now, I want to make sure that, number one, I'm proud, but my family's proud with the development as well. The entranceway here, we have a, we have a little roundabout which provides, which we'll talk about a little bit, traffic engineer will discuss that a little bit more. But there's certainly benefits to having the turnabout. Minimizes any kind of bottlenecking or anything within the development. We have that. We have a, a little area here, which we will have a security shed here, which I can show you on the next slide. We have in this area here, this is a mailbox building where all mailboxes would, would be put. There is additional parking there, ADA access. The community building, as I mentioned, is approximately 3,000 square feet. This will be utilized for any kind of private parties for the residents, birthday parties, so forth, that could be used during holidays. Along with that, we did provide a parking for the, for the community building. This will also be used for overflow, overflow parking for the development as well. The pool area is here in blue. And then we did have bocce, bocce courts on this side here and a couple pickleball and tennis courts in that area there. So we feel this would be a great feature to the, to the development. These are benefits, not just to the residents, but to the town's image on how affordable housing can look. This here is just a, a rough, another project that Mr. Cusson had worked on, and it just gives you a rough idea, the New England-type of look of a, of a security shed we would like to have at the entrance, to give you a rough, rough idea. These next slides, I'm, I'm going to go through pretty quickly. We just wanted to give you a rough idea of the renderings of what type of houses that are going to be built. Certainly, there's a mixture of different sizes and variety. Most of them are going to be, you know, New England-style, style houses. Front porches, pitched roofs, varied facades. And they're designed to complement similar houses in the, in the area. So these I'm going to go through pretty, pretty quickly, it's quite a bit. The, the Chester is, is one house with one-car garage. This is the Chester with, with two, two-stall garage. And keep in mind, all the houses are built with, in front of the drive, in front of the garage. There's room for parking as well. There's 21 feet minimum of the, maybe 22 feet in front of the garage to be able to park as well. This is the Dogwood House. The Elm. Poplar. Sycamore. Now just keep in mind, the, the houses we're showing, that, that they're shown on all level grades. A lot of these houses are going to have walkout basements to meet topography, to minimize the amounts of fill that will be needed for the development. As the engineer, it's, it's our goal to try to balance the site as much as possible. So we want to work with the existing grades out there. We do that for numerous reasons, stormwater design, cost. You don't want to have to bring in a lot of material. And certainly, you don't want to have to haul out a bunch of material off-site. The good thing with this site is it's, it's a pretty balanced site. That also minimizes construction vehicles in and out of the site hauling in or hauling out material. So we did a, we did a really good job with that. The next slide here, this is, again, the, the site plan. I, I really just wanted to discuss some of the, some of the issues. I've been doing this for over 20 years, and, you know, this, I, I love doing projects within my community. I feel, you know, I'm one of the best civil engineers in the area. It means a lot to me. And the quality of work that we're going to put into this is, is going to go into details. As I said, I want to be proud of this project. And I think that's a benefit to the, to the community, rather than having someone here who you're never going to see again. You'll, you'll see my face here for another, hopefully, 40, 50 years. But I know there's issues here. I know that. I know traffic. I drive along this site just as much as all of you do. And I know traffic is, is certainly an issue. This isn't a level-of-service A-road. I'm not going to go too much into traffic because I'm not a traffic engineer, but none of you are either, and you know there's traffic issues out here. You know we're building houses, and come, with houses, come vehicles. We, we know that. We hired the best traffic engineer company to provide a traffic report, and they're going to, they're going to come back with some, probably at the next meeting, we would like to have them give their presentation to you and go over the, the traffic management and any mitigation that's going to be required outside the site. Now, I can tell you, I designed everything inside the site, and I designed where the access, where the roadway is going to go. And for me, as a civil engineer, the most important thing for me is public safety. And this development right here, there are no safety issues. The entrance there has enough site distance. It doesn't take a traffic engineer to, to do that. That's been already done. Stormwater. Stormwater, I can tell you, every big project I have, I have abutters saying, my yard's going to get flooded. I get it. If I was in a butter, that would be my concern as well. The good thing with this site, majority of it drains to the west, to the, to the bordering vegetated wetlands. There is a portion behind the houses along Tucker that do drain back, back to Tucker. The goal as an engineer is to make sure that the post-development runoff, specifically those houses along Tucker, is going to be less than what it, it will be when this development is done. And I can guarantee you it will be. My job as an engineer is, is to make sure that happens. There will be a peer-review consultant that does review the stormwater. They're working for you. They will do their job to make sure that I'm doing mine. And at the end of the day, stormwater is the least of my concerns with this project. The soil testing we did came back very positive. So we will be moving forward with the stormwater design. It is a C, mostly C-type soil. It's not the best for infiltration. So most likely, we're going to have, the basins will all be detention basins. But we'll go in, a little more into detail when the plans are finalized. In regards to the density, now I know everybody in here is saying this is way too many, way too many houses. Is this a lot of houses? Yeah, I, I, I agree, there's a lot of houses here. But keep in mind, the town is under a, under affordable housing for a reason. We need, we need more housing care. Paul mentioned it for his grandchildren. I'm sure all of you have grandchildren here. Kids are going to need houses, kids are going to need somewhere to go. What this provides is, is a development that will help the town meet their, meet their requirement. If it's not here, guess what? It's going in somebody else who knows backyard. I, I get it, you don't want, if you guys can just let me talk, that would be great. I get it. You know? This is very close to my backyard.
Mr. Folon?
Yep.
If you could just direct the comment to the board.
Sure. Sorry about that.
No problem.
As I was saying, these, these, these homes are going to be well, well-designed. They're very similar to the abutting, abutting properties. This type of development, we're providing amenities, this isn't something we have to do, but we are, we are doing that. We are providing a phasing plan, which is very important for this type of 140-plus units. So you're not going to see 140 units at once. Some of you may not even see this development finished. You know, this probably could take six to eight years. You may be out of, you may have moved, or you may moved on to another town.
Excuse me. Excuse me. May not have been the best choice of words.
Yeah, sorry about that.
So, Mr. Folon, I'll let you continue.
I went off script.
Okay, no problem.
But the most important thing with this development, which I really want to hit on, this project has one unit per 17,000 square feet. The abutting property-
Can you say that again, please? Sorry?
One per 17. Development has approximately one unit per 17,000 square feet. The unit to the south, the development to the south, has one per 11,000 square feet. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I may, the, the, the development to the north has about one unit per 20,000 square feet. And the abutting Tucker Road and similar development to the east is about one per 15,000 square feet. More importantly, for a 40B project, you typically have six to 12 units per acre. The, the project before this was 16 per acre. Not that I want to bring up the other project. This project here, we're at 2 and 1/2 units per acre, which is actually, believe it or not, significantly less than typical 40B projects. So when we talk about density, when we talk about, is this too many houses? Absolutely not. It's not. It's not.
So now that you're on the issue of dens, of density, how did you get to the number of 147 units?
I have 144 units.
It's 144?
147.
Regardless, still, 140, I, I believe, based on all the documents I've seen, it was 147 units. How did you arrive at that number?
The duplex units, there's 15 duplex. So that's 30 units there. And then I had 114 single-family. 117. So that would get you 147.
To what was provided to us on July 28th from Delphic and Associates, it says 117 single-family units and 30 duplexes. So that, I add that up to 147. But obviously, three units don't change things all that much. But I'm just wondering, because the density, to me, certainly seems to be a little bit alarming. But I, I understand your comparisons, I'm just listening to them. I'm not actually verifying anything at this point in time. But how did, just ask again, how did you arrive at the number of 147?
We, through the, through the development that we, we've done, most of these lots are decent-sized lots. And from previous projects that we've done, and the need of the town, we feel this, this was the right number of, of units.
On average, what's a square foot of each one of the lots for each one of these homes? I know you're saying it's 17,000, but it doesn't add up to 17,000 each one of these lots.
No, some of the lots are, are less, some of the lots are more.
And what is the less?
Less, I would say, the closer to maybe 10,000. Some of the larger lots could be, could be 30. We will, we can provide a breakdown for you, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Yeah, I would like that. Obviously, not for tonight, but on next meeting, if you could have that. I hate to interrupt because I know it breaks your train of thought. And I know when, when, when I try to make arguments, when I get my train of thought broken, it obviously changes my direction of my presentation. But you can carry on.
Yeah, that was, I'm almost wrapping it up. But I did just want to go over, summarize the, the community benefits to this project. Certainly helped manage housing affordability. This project brings affordable units and moves Dartmouth closer to the, to the 10% SHI goal. Enhance fiscal sustainability. New households contribute property tax revenue, which supports schools, services, and town infrastructure. Promotes smart growth. Thoughtful design and clustering with our plan showcases how density can be applied while preserving the town's rural character and natural resources and support retention of local residents. Affordable homeownership opportunities help younger families and seniors remain rooted in town. Again, I know the abutters will certainly have questions, which I'll be glad to answer at the next, next meeting. But I'd love to open up to the, to the board and answer any possible questions I can tonight.
Certainly.
On the issue, on the issue of traffic, we have submitted two traffic reports. In the, in the early stages, I was very concerned about the entrance to the development, which is the same entrance as the old Hoffam Country Club. So we had a report done by Viness Associates, Mr. Dirk, and he did a study on the entrance, took a look at what they call site distance and stopping, site distance and stopping distances. And he concluded in his report that there, in accordance to the engineering traffic- And he concluded in his report that there, in accordance to the engineering traffic standards, that we exceed the site distance at the entrance. In addition to that report, we also submitted a full traffic report. So, once Mr. Durk determined that that entrance met all the safety requirements of Ashto, he began, has completed his full traffic report. And that has been also submitted to the board and uploaded on your site, and obviously subject to traffic peer review. Getting into, and also from a safety point of view, his report suggests a secondary means of egress, or an emergency means of egress. So, I just want to point out to the board... May I continue?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I just wanted to point out to the board, if you could show where the cul-de-sac is. So, where Christian is pointing out, that could be a secondary, very easily, we have access, we have access out onto Fairway Drive. We have legal access to that, which could be used as an emergency means of egress, if the board and if your consultants think that's the right thing to do. We're not proposing a secondary means of egress at this time, but I just want to point out, in our own traffic report, they're suggesting a secondary means of egress.
If I may add, Mr. Chairman, too, I did, when I did meet with the fire department, they were fine with the cul-de-sac. What they would like to see...
Excuse me, folks, I got to be able to hear the gentleman. All right? I understand the concern, the emotion behind all this, but I got to be able to hear them. Thank you.
What they did say they would like to see there is maybe a crushed gravel. In case of an emergency, be able to use that, and like a breakaway gate, so that way, the residents aren't using it as a cut-through street, either from the abutting property or from this development.
Mr. Chair, if you could maybe request a comment from the fire chief to the board?
Yeah.
What was said in the meeting, I think might be helpful for everyone. And we'd be glad to meet with them again. Getting back to the issue of traffic again, in your next meeting...
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
All right, hold on one sec. Yes, counsel?
I think it would be helpful if they're claiming that they have legal access to Fairway Drive, that they provide something in writing demonstrating what rights they believe they have. That might be helpful.
Did you hear that?
Sure. I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is that in a case of emergency, the fire department can go wherever they want. But I'll leave that up to the attorneys to figure that out. And getting back to the traffic, the, since we've submitted a full traffic report, at the next meeting, you were suggesting that you're hopefully going to be selecting possibly a peer review firm. We would like at that meeting, not only for that to happen, but for us to be able to make a presentation just on traffic. Have a professional engineer submit that.
I'm not adverse to that.
That would be the pleasure of the board.
We want everyone to hear everything.
Mr. Chair, and, you know, maybe we can discuss it with the town administrator's office, who's kind of trying to help facilitate it. It might be helpful if whoever the board is going to engage, if that can be determined for it, to have them present for that presentation. Yeah, so maybe we can coordinate that with the town administrator's office.
That's included in their quote, that they're going to be present for at least two, maybe three meetings.
Okay. So, maybe that can get determined prior to the next meeting, so that whoever is hired can be... Okay.
Great suggestion. Thank you.
Carry on.
That was it, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
So, gentlemen, any questions?
Not at this point. I have no questions.
Couple of comments, actually, Mr. Chair, if I may. So, I'm glad to, you said you have a full traffic study, because when I went through the package, I only had the assessment on the entrance. And my question was, I know there's some increase with the traffic. My concern was the level of service on, and I see that they addressed that in the full report.
Yes.
I just got a copy of it right now. So, that was one question that I had. And also...
We also dropped off 10 copies, or seven copies.
He actually wasn't here at the last meeting, and that's when they were provided to us.
Oh, okay.
So, unfortunately, we weren't able to get you one. But he's got one.
And the second is, I assume that at the next meeting, if you're asking for more waivers, that you go through the plans one more time and put all the waivers together. And also, I heard from Mr. Farland that you are working on the stormwater, so that's, we would like to get that ASAP, so we can get the peer review engaged, right? And the utilities, I heard you saying something about the profiles, because the plans as they stand now, I don't think we want to send those to the peer review, because you'll be wasting money.
I think the goal, the goal would be to make sure, I mean, we could pick, if the plans aren't done by the, I think the 25th is the next meeting, certainly, we will hold off on the peer review until we submit the complete set.
I agree, because it'll be waste of time and money, basically.
Yep, absolutely. And we do plan on having everything done within two to three weeks. So, it lines up pretty close to the date.
And I would also ask, if you can provide us something from the fire department, that you met with them, with the template and, you know, the movement and the radiuses, and you meet all the apparatus.
I think he suggested that we actually write to the fire department, to the chief, and have him of that district, have him review it and have any comments, so that they could address them.
Either way, I don't have anything from, they said, they said, at the last meeting. So, just if we have something, and I'm sure we're going to have something from DPW also or Engineering at some point, so...
Yeah, the goal is to meet with DPW once we have the drainage done. We hope to meet with them before the next meeting as well, because they're certainly going to be a big part of this.
Yeah. The concern is the safety, basically, not, you know, like, the design, it's all, this is all standard, you know, with the houses and the style and the access, and this is all kind of, but definitely, traffic is a concern, and I'm hoping that you'll, at the next meeting or when we discuss traffic, our peer review will be here as long as with your traffic engineer, and we can hear from both sides. That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I just have one other thing. You had requested the size of lots. We will provide that for you, but it's also on the plan, the plans that you have received.
I couldn't read them.
Well, we also provided full-size plans, so we'd be glad to submit...
That I did not get. That I did not get. I only had these smaller plans. On the other petition, I got a full-size plan.
We'll get a breakdown for you.
So, it's getting difficult to read those.
Would you like additional copies of the full-size, Michelle, or do you have them?
Yes.
I'll set. I'll make sure they get it.
Okay. Great. All right, so if there are no more questions from the members of the board, we got to discuss if we're going to put this on for the same date as the next case, which is the 25th. Or, the only problem is that, given our conflicts with our personal schedules, if we don't put it on for the 25th, because she's not available on the 18th of September, if we don't put it on for the 25th, it'll have to go into October 24th or 20, October 24th, 20, 23rd, 23rd or 30th. So, you know, I know that these things take time, but we got to get it...
Why don't we put it on for the 25th?
25th, both of them.
I agree. I mean, it's a long night.
Walter? 25th, okay?
Yes.
Well, that's one of the things. I also don't want to make these really long nights either, so we can, and we got to be fair to both applicants, give them a certain amount of time to put forth their presentations. All right, so I see their attorney getting up. Is there something you'd like to add, sir?
Yeah, I think in the interest of time and consideration, knowing you'll have a busy night on the 25th, if we can find it to that traffic presentation, and knowing that that's the limited focus of it, I think we can make quick work of our presentation, and if there's any peer review comments right there, I think that'll help expedite things, because I know you have a busy night that night.
Yeah, the only problem is, I don't think we will have engaged a traffic consultant, a peer traffic consultant, to be present on that particular night.
So, and I guess I, just a quick comment on that, and sometimes this happens, but I leave it to the board and town administration. Sometimes what we do when I'm representing communities is the board will designate someone who could approve that scope, so they can get going. We're fine also just making that presentation that night, and obviously soliciting comments from the public, and then we could have your peer review consultant in another time. Whatever you're most comfortable with, I just wanted to point out that we're fine confining our time on the 25th to just our traffic presentation, so that we're not repeating all of this and going over the whole thing all over again. That way, you can confine public comments as well to the traffic elements. We'll deal with public comments on engineering and flooding, or whatever it may be, when all that stuff is done by Mr. Farland. I'm just trying to be respectful of your time on the 25th.
Thank you. So, counsel?
Yeah, I do think it would be helpful if the board was comfortable having a traffic engineer engaged and having them at the meeting, so that they can actually hear it in person. They may not have been able to fully review everything, but at least they can hear it directly, they can provide some initial feedback, maybe flag any additional information they think is missing that's necessary. I, you know, I defer to you, Mr. Chair, and the board, on how you want to do it. I know you could designate one of you to work with the town administrator's office to look at the scopes and see if you're comfortable, even if it's just to get traffic on, since traffic's going to be the only thing you're discussing, but, you know, I want to, I just think it's more helpful to have your peer review expert engaged in the room if they're going to make a presentation.
Do you want to handle that?
Sure. Do we know who the traffic engineer, the peer traffic engineer, or who we're getting proposals from at this time? Because I know, I mean, Vanessa, reputable company, and I think I want to get someone who's at their level, too, you know?
Yeah, yes.
We don't...
No, we could put forth a motion that we would authorize, we could authorize and designate Halim to, it's areas of expertise, that we could designate and authorize him to engage, or pick, actually, the town would engage, but he would be able to select the individuals as peer reviews in each of the sciences.
Yeah, because Mr. Vitali's coordinating a lot of those, and he's been getting names of potential peer reviewers from the department heads who work with them, and so I believe he's got a shortlist, and he's just waiting for some to come in at this point.
I want to entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we authorize Halim Shuba to be the representative of the board to select the appropriate peer review person for the traffic.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.
Do you want to limit it just to the traffic at this point, or do you want to designate him for all?
If you're willing to take on all of them, I have no problem with that. He's in a better position to know the individuals that have a good reputation in each of these sciences, much more so than I do.
So, it would be, so the other potential peer reviewers would be, yeah, you could just make it generic, any applicable, but it's going to be stormwater, civil, it may be wetlands if it applies, it's going to be wastewater because of the impacts on the sewer treatment plant, et cetera. So, if you wanted to make a motion, it could just be a generic, all necessary peer reviewers.
You'll renew the motion.
I make a motion that we authorize Halim Shuba to make decisions with regard to whatever peer review parties we need for this particular project.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. So, you're authorized.
All right. That's good. And I think we should put the traffic on the 25th, so at least we can get some feedback from the public and some, you know, so that will be...
And given that we have a consultant, we're going to try to have our consultant there, I ask that we put this one on first. All right, this one will be in at 6 o'clock. All right, so at this time, I want to thank all of you for coming out here this evening. Certainly shows me support. It's promising to know that there are so many people that love this town, as I do, as we do. And certainly, I know that it's difficult to have reservation and not be able to comment on some of these things, but I promise you, you will have your opportunity, all right? You come here, you will have your opportunity to put forth. Obviously, at some point, I may have to limit it so that there's not redundancy about the same issue and same concern, because if we hear it two or three times, we already know, right? We think we know. It's just a matter of trying to hone out the issues that are most alarming to everyone, immediate abudders, even just members, even just general members of our community that just drive by and have a concern of what's going to happen on Tucker Road. So, I want you to know that we don't have discussions, but I know these gentlemen that are here, whatever you're feeling, they're feeling too, right? They're feeling too. And these projects are going to change the aesthetics and the face of our community, and it's something that I labor with as well. I was born here, I've lived in this town all my life. So, we're going to try to work on this. The problem is, is our hands are somewhat tied. We can only ask for things that will limit impacts. That's what we're going to try to do. So, I ask that when you go home, you try to formulate your position on this, your argument, your thoughts, that you think about what it is that would be able to, that we could craft that would limit the impact that it may have to you or your family or to our community, Okay, so, I want to announce, no, I wanted to announce first, and we're going to make a motion. So, our next meeting on this case, excuse me, folks, it's not, we're not done yet. We're not done. Our next meeting on this case will be Wednesday, September, excuse me, I will reiterate, our next meeting will be Thursday, September 25th at 6:00 at the middle school auditorium. That's right next door. And this case will be on first at 6:00. And the only reason I'm doing that, taking that out of order, is because we will have an expert who's going to be there, listening to their expert, who knows more about traffic than most of us, and will have the opportunity to ask questions of our expert as to whether or not their assessment is accurate, one, whether or not it's taken into consideration all the variables that need to be taken in order to make a proper determination. So, that's the reason I'm going to put this one on first at 6:00. Hopefully, that works for most people. So, gentlemen, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we continue comprehensive permit ZCMP 25-1 to September 25th at 6:00 PM at the middle school.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. You all have a nice evening. I'll see you in about a month. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.